It is now seven P M. Welcome to Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, Town Council meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting, and silence all electronic devices while we cook. We'll consume community government room. And folks, please, if you can adhere to that, we had some issues at the last meeting, and some folks didn't hear some things, and I think it's important. So please do your best. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator Lynn Jones to please call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gordy?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Lowen?
Here.
Councilmember Dietrich?
Here.
Councilmember Faverro?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Thank you. Councilperson Dietrich will now lead us in an implication.
Laura, thank you for bringing everybody here safely tonight, and keep them safe through this weather outside. Also, thank you for our first responders. Keep them safe in their roles. Thank you, say.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Lowen will now lead us in our pledge. You can leave
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. It is now seven oh two. I'm going to stop the meeting because we have a ceremony tonight to take place in front of us. So we'll have a stop at seven oh two. So it took approximately two minutes for the council to do its thing. They're getting very efficient, folks. So I appreciate that. So tonight, we have a swearing in ceremony that we're going to be taking place. And but before we do that, I want to give a formal introduction to, I think, you talk about a town, and you talk about hidden gems. Well, I think that we have one in town, and sometimes we take advantage of them, and sometimes we don't. But I'm going to introduce the Honorable Judge Robert Ramirez. I'm privileged to introduce the Honorable Judge Robert Ramirez, who's been serving as a presiding judge of Denton County at Law Number Two since two thousand and ten. A native Texan, Judge Ramirez earned the Bachelor of Business Administration and Management from Saint Mary's University in nineteen ninety four, followed by a Master's Business Administration and Business and Public Policy from Texas A and M University in nineteen ninety eight, and the Juris Doctor from Southern Methodist University, Denman School of Law in two thousand and one. Before I send you to the bench, Judge Ramirez amassed extensive experience in both private practice and corporate law. He served as an Associate at Jones Day, then as General Counsel at Victory Management Services, and concurrently as Managing Attorney at Corpender Ramirez Attorneys. The diverse background provided him with comprehensive perspective of our legal system. Furthermore, he is a member of the Denton County Juvenile Board, contributing to the county's oversight and administration of juvenile justice. Judge is known for his commitment to justice and community service. Judge Ramirez has implemented innovative programs aimed at rehabilitation and reduced him recidivism. His dedication to fairness and integrity has earned him the respect of colleagues and constituents alike. We are honored to have Judge Ramirez with us today and all the things he does for our town. So Judge, I would like to say thank you.
My pleasure.
All right. Next, I'd like to introduce the Miller family. And it would be Dan and his family. I'm honored to introduce Dan Miller, who will be officially sworn in tonight as the new Chief of Police for the Town of Double Oak. Dan brings a wealth of experience and professionalism and dedication to public service, and we are thrilled to welcome him into our community. Dan is not only a seasoned law enforcement professional, but also devoted family man, and joining in tonight are his wife Carla and his daughter Gabriella Russell. Carla has been Dan's steadfast partner, supporting him throughout his career, and Gabriella is the source of pride and joy for their family. Please join me in welcoming Dan, Carla, and Gabriella to the Double Oak family. We are excited about Dan's leadership and fresh perspective on our police department's continued priority of the safety and well-being of our town. So in advance, I'd like to say congratulations, Dan. I appreciate you very much. And I'd like to have the Judge, Dan, and the family please come up to the front, and we'll start with the session. Up to your right, right in the background, please. The lady in the big boots is going to take a picture. I think we're good with the camera about right here.
That way they can see him.
We are good.
All right. Chief, if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dan Miller?
I, Dan Miller.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Police Chief of the Town of Double Oak?
Of the Office of Police Chief of the Town of Double Oak.
Of the State of Texas?
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the great state of Texas?
And the great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God. Dan's wife Carla will now pin his badge upon his chest, signifying he's now the Chief of Police of Double Oak, Texas.
Don't go too deep.
He doesn't hear from Doug.
Thank you. So we, real quick, I'd like to get pictures with the council and the family and the judge. And then we've got some cake out here. We'll go ahead and have a little reception. Everybody to meet the, meet Dan and his family. So if you want, council, you want to come on up? All right. So help yourself to some at the reception. We've got some cake and some waters.
Chief, get the sign real quick. Then I'll sign, countersign, and you will be all official. Chief, if I can get you the sign right here, I will do the rest, and you are good to go. It's left on the board. You shouldn't see my board. You're a coordinator. She's been with me all fourteen and a half years. God bless her. She has to read my stuff. She just, you know. Oh, sir. Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you, Mr. President of the
Well, the public, which is their ruling seat. Now, they're public seats, so they're all really getting in. But I'm going to, I'm going to, let's get together. Go get some pay. Go get some pay. To go with all your cookies.
Oh, I'm eating dinner on the way home.
Somebody, I'm running a bunch of Girl Scout cookies.
Oh, really?
Oh, I was going to bring some too, because I keep buying them. You thought me off of
What house? The other house?
No, we're getting a painter. We have a painter.
That's why you told me.
He's supposed to be finished, and so I went down there to clean up the rest. Because I have, I moved there to meet the countertop. He wasn't finished. We have a painter. He called finish.
Just like me.
My apartment was going to be finished last week. So I went down there to meet the countertop. He called, and I thought, I'll clean the house.
That's, that's what my wife is saying about her coffee right now.
I can only get my work to work.
About two days before Christmas, I needed a longer lift, and she went out to dinner, and she's like, okay, after Christmas, I would like these three things. And I'm like, I wanted you to jackhammer the floor of my utility room.
You said, it's your utility room. How hard can that be?
In our utility room, it's good size.
Okay.
It is a good size.
It's like, it's like a group.
It is a group.
It is a group.
Oh, it's, no, it's probably ten by six. I mean, it's, that's how it's wired, you know, with the closet.
Yeah.
And it's got a sink, and then it's got a, a place for folding clothes.
That's the only thing I don't like about it. I wish I had a bigger room. So next week, I'm going to take this picture.
Oh, you guys may be.
See what they say.
Oh, yeah. Have you talked to somebody yet or anything?
Someone says, hey, people need to go shopping. I don't actually. But I was talking to Mary that, they have a plumbing company as well.
Oh, I didn't know that they were plumbing. I didn't know.
They have plumbing too.
I didn't know.
So she said that. I asked about forty years. So I was telling Tommy, and maybe we'll just go ahead.
It is now seven twenty eight. We will go ahead and proceed with our meeting. Appreciate everybody who attended tonight for the ceremony. Great ceremony, beautiful family, super excited, Dan, thank you. All right, first item up, citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. We did not have anybody sign up for the non-agenda items this evening, therefore, I believe I don't have to read any of that stuff, or do I? So I'll just take this a few minutes. Item four, consent agenda. All consent agenda items are listed, are considered to be routine by the Town Council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests in which the event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. This evening, council, we have the item five, is discussed, consider, and act on the minutes of January sixth. Were there any changes or adjustments needed to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Item six and seven. Item six and seven, discuss, consider, enact on the Laserfish pond license renewal from Community Development Solutions in the amount of not to exceed $4,000. And discuss and consider, enact on content management soft system license and service renewal for the town website with Civic Plus in the amount of not to exceed $3,066.79. Council, these are renewals that are in the budget. Any questions about the consent agenda items? Okay, if there's no questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Gorton and a second by Councilperson Robertson. Lynn, could you please follow the vote?
Ms. Robertson, aye. Ms. Willen, aye. Dr. K, aye. Mr. Gorton, aye. Mr. Dietrich, aye.
All right, consent agenda passes, thanks, council. Item five, mayor, council members and staff reports. As usual, we'll go ahead and start with the council. I'm gonna go ahead and start with Councilperson Robertson.
I don't have anything to speak.
Not this week, okay.
Not this week.
Councilperson Vera.
Nothing much. Everything else is roads, and I'm sure you guys will mention it, so.
Okay. Councilperson Dietrich.
Oh, we had a good meeting with Chris and Brian. Stuff over a while with technology things, and that's gonna be reflected in some of the stuff down below here. Thanks for your time on that.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Willen.
Nothing for me.
Mayor Pro Tim Gorton.
I got one thing. So this new development going on in Flower Mound at the end of King's Road, Eden Way.
The ranch.
Eden Ranch. It's going in, and they've made all kinds of corrections and deals to their platform, whatever it may be. And I think there needs to be a formal response from the town of Double Oak and the citizens of Double Oak. In some form or fashion, maybe a petition to Flower Mound or a... And we'd love to have the town sign off on that because we don't want that road, their exit coming on to King's Road. And as we know, with the potholes that keep going up there, it's just gonna get worse if they have more traffic coming out of there. So I'd like to, you know, just make a formal kind of, and maybe next town council meeting we put together, something that was related to a petition or something along that line that we can do as a town to make a presentation to the town of Flower Mound.
I'd say too, to address roads and drainage, both. But to make sure that they're not just draining all their stuff to us. Yeah.
So I know that Katie Collins has been hot on it. So does anybody have her contact information?
I'll get with her and we'll work on something to do. She's definitely been the big follower of all that and items along that line. And I think it's something we need to do as a town just to address that.
I think addressing the changes, because I do have a sign up now that they're changing the zoning of it from two acre lots, I believe is what it was, which had about 150 to 160 houses as all, to a development that's gonna have about 250 houses when it's all said and done. And so I think we need to oppose that as well.
And those 250 houses are gonna be on the east side of that property.
Mainly on the east side.
Where that exit is gonna be, where people are gonna wanna come out of.
And the zero lot line houses, he has in the plan to put, because he does have fifty-two zero lot line houses. He's going to put them down by where the trailer park is and that corner up against Double Oak as well.
So yeah, if you'll reach out to Katie. I'll reach out to Half and Associates. They're actually, Half and Associates is designing the engineering, excuse me, the roundabout. So it will be a roundabout that will feed off of into King's, to McMakin, the road that goes west from there, what is that road?
Hawk.
Hawk.
Hawk. So it'll encompass Hawk, McMakin, Shiloh, and King's Road are all gonna be in this big roundabout.
An eight lane roundabout?
I'm not sure.
I mean, if there's a long distance between Hawk and King's.
Yeah, that's gonna...
Yeah, but well, it's gonna, at least the early picture I saw was it is gonna be big, and they're not sure if it's gonna be further south or further north, or further west. Because I think they almost have to put in west. So I'll reach out to Half and Jim Carter and see if they've done any design work on it. Okay? Thank you. I just had a couple things. We start the Millen overlay project on Thursday, and we will have King's Road closed for almost a week. Did they get the signage out there?
Going in tomorrow, unfortunately.
Yeah, I thought it was going in Friday, and I was out there Saturday. Okay, so we wanna make sure that citizens know, so let's repurpose every day this week, or at least tomorrow, a blast and on the website. So if you haven't, so we will have King's Road closed between Victory and Whispering Oaks Drive, I believe. If you live in those two areas, you'll have access to get in. But other than that, King's Road will be completely blocked off. So Chief, we'll need to make sure that we got enough room to get fire trucks through.
Enough room basically is one lane. Because the lanes are so narrow that we're already bugging the edge as it is, which is fine. But if they try to say, "Well, hey, can we make them another eighteen inches narrower?" I mean, if it's compressed dirt and it doesn't rain, and then we can be right on the edge, maybe, but really they need to try to keep it from where the dirt starts now to the yellow stripe.
Okay. So we'll talk to them, make sure that they know that we gotta be able to get past fire trucks through. We hope we don't have to do that, but we need to plan for it, so.
Do we need to let Flower Mound know? Because, you know, they sometimes like to drive that big thing with the back, you know, I'd like to see them get that through there, so.
Yep, it's pretty wide.
Yeah, so they probably need to know.
Okay. I'll give Chief a call. All right, thank you for that. And then Chief, obviously, the, probably the morning we close it, there's gonna be a lot of people. So we may want to just have an officer around there just in case. We don't need people trying to, you know, cheat the system and drive around barricades or something, so. Hopefully, it's gonna go faster than we think. But I can tell you, I spent forty-five minutes up there on Saturday blocking that. It's bad. And I think we as a town need to come to a realization that whether King's Road is completely replaced or not, King's Road is going to be a serious financial problem for our town in order for its upkeep for years on end, so. We'll, I'll reach out to Judge Heitz too here in a week or two, just to see where they're at with the TRIP 2022, and get an idea of what they're thinking on that as well, since they're working on the roundabout, just to kind of see what's happening, so. Okay? Public Works Code Enforcement.
Public Works, big thing is the start of the street project like we just talked about with the, there was a delay, and that delay was due to the weather, obviously, with the cold weather. And again, if it gets too cold, even for King's Road, they're gonna have to postpone it because you can't lay the material that they have. If it's too cold, it's not going to cure properly and stuff, so keep our fingers crossed starting on Thursday that it warms up a little bit. The contractor does know that King's Road is our number one priority and to put their focus on getting that done first. But after that, we got a wide range of smaller projects since that one's done, including a couple drainage improvements throughout the town.
Do you happen to know, like, when they're gonna do other parts of the town? Or is it kinda gonna be boom, boom?
They just gave me a schedule today. I'd be happy to send it to you so you could, so you could know.
Yeah, once you send it out, and then what we'll do is we'll all write up a blast of the town.
Yeah, just be aware, it's all weather dependent. This crazy cold weather is gonna put a hamper on our wonderful schedule that we have, but we will push as much as we can.
Thank you. Administration.
I joined the act for administration last week. We did have our auditor come in and start the audit. He was here Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. He should be wrapping it up this week. Can hear the rest from his office, but he's been checking out everything. Had a lot of good conversations with him, let's put it that way. And we found some things that were definitely needed to be cleaned up, that will be cleaned up. And he'll be making a presentation to council probably in February.
So, once we have the audit and everything's cleaned up, I'm gonna refer back to a council meeting or so ago where we had a citizen ask about the financial reports and all that, and we will go back to a point where we have those done on a regularly scheduled basis. So it's been quite an undertaking to go through what we've been going through, and we'll get back into the cadence with the posting of financials as well as doing all the appropriate updates that we have typically done in the past.
And Laura was involved?
Yes.
Laura was very involved, yes.
The town treasurer has been a godsend throughout this, so appreciate it. Lynn, did you have anything?
Well, there is still time to file. If anybody's interested in running for council or mayor position, we've got the packets, and this is the time to do it if you wanna file. And I am headed to Round Rock tomorrow for the election law seminar.
Is it still gonna be on with the weather? Did they get it?
They got it, but roads are not that way.
Okay, good. Will you be safe down there?
Thank you.
So thank you. Public safety. Chief, I got two chiefs here, I got a lot of chiefs here today.
First two weeks have been mostly administrative, getting up to speed on various systems and kind of finding my way around. Now that I'm sworn in, I'm looking forward to getting out there and meeting people and learning the city. Chief Kingsley, did you have anything to add?
I don't have anything.
Chief Eric.
When was the day of the roads starting? Just so I...
Thursday.
This Thursday. Can one of y'all send a group meeting to just warn everybody that heading, that King's is gonna be a problem? I keep it that way, I don't need to remember to do it.
I'll call Chief Duffell tomorrow.
Okay.
And just let him know.
Okay. I just thought I'd give you all the end of December, so that's like our yearly totals. So we had 246 calls last year, which was up five percent. Fire calls were 103 of those, so a little higher percentage of fire calls this year, but always less than medical like we expect. We had almost 3,000 training hours, which is about 100 hours per person, and we had almost 7,6800 volunteer hours. Divide that by thirty, so what is that, twenty-some hours plus per, and 200 and something per. We had seven or eight new black helmets last year. We had a couple people leave the department to get hired somewhere else. We still have one member who got hired, but he's still volunteering. He'll be one of the first ever hired full-time somewhere else and keep putting in time, because it just gets so hard on them. But he's been really good at it so far. We're sending five people to Teeks Fire Academy for various classes, I think through taking Wildland, one is taking...
The other two are taking also...
I was gonna say Officer One are at training position, are in training class. That's in March. That's pretty much the highlights that we have planned for the year, and the normal stuff throughout the year, but we're just right now getting going on who's going to Teeks. And then we've got a couple, probably four people going to TCC Fire Academy for classes. We've been like, had a little less turnover, so now we've got people that already have their first cert, so now they need to work on the next one. So we've got some people going for their Fire Two, who already have earned their black helmet, because they got the Fire One and Hazmat, but now they wanna go do Fire Two, so they're gonna start doing that. And then we just had a Marcus student who graduated early. He started Fire Academy at NCTC this morning, so, yeah, he even cut his hair short and shaved off his whiskey little...
He did? I met him, I can't remember when it was, his father introduced me to him.
Okay, yeah.
He said he was gonna do that.
He got advice from one of his peers that said, "Look, they're gonna make you do it anyway." Or highly suggest that you do it. So you ought to just show up the first day, clean shaven and shorter hair. And so he came to training yesterday already for class this morning, and I saw him today, and he said it went well, so, anyway, we're excited for him. Anything y'all, I can answer for y'all while I'm up here?
Did Chief Bob, did he have that long hair and now this is what it's like?
I'm not gonna comment on what anyone's hair used to look like.
Sorry.
Fair enough. Any other council members have any questions?
Well, we appreciate everything y'all do. It's, I always like it when it's quiet and I don't hear sirens, but when I do, I always go outside to make sure everything's okay.
We had three calls yesterday and one today. One fire today, I think they were all medical yesterday, if I remember correctly, but nothing horrible.
And Andrew Weaver shared with us today that we actually have high wildland wildfire risk here at Double Oak.
Yeah, I mean, it's been dry and it's windy, so, yeah.
So that is one thing that my husband and I were talking about, is writing up something to let people know that a lot of the fires start because you have plants and vegetation underneath your leaves.
Yep.
And so people need to be aware of that and brush and things and remove it from their yards now, because that's what devastates your house. So could you write something like that for the Friday updates, that people understand what the real risks are and that? Because you don't sit here and go, "Oh, I have councilors next to me, wildfires aren't gonna happen where we are," but they can, yeah.
Do you want like, how long do you want it to be? Couple paragraphs?
Yeah, that's fine.
Sort of like your top ten, like if you can do these ten things to...
Yes, that would be great.
And that's part of like, we go into plumbing and wildland, what sometimes you end up doing. You babysit a series of homes, and the first thing you do is you show up and they say, you knock on the door, and you're like, "We need your help doing this," and you move their propane tanks and their grill away from the house, and then you start cutting brush and bushes back from their house, and tell them to move their woodpile away from the back of their house, and all those things, right? Then there's nothing left. So, and then if it's just good siding and brick, usually you're fine. And I think we're all seeing that in the LA fires. The houses that are standing were brick and stone and had metal roofs, and had already either done zera scaping or something else, so there wasn't anything there. I mean, a garden hose at that point protected their home, so.
Yes, it was terrible, so. Yeah, we don't, and so we do have an emergency plan here in Double Oak. It's something that Chief and I are responsible for, and I do want to, we're gonna sit down here, Chief, and start talking about goals and objectives for the town. And I think that's something that we need to put on the list and kind of review it and see if there's things that we need to do with it.
Okay.
So, but we appreciate y'all, appreciate all of our first responders. We are a super lucky town to have y'all.
Thanks. I thought you were trying to lean into the microphone.
Yeah, just waiting. A lot of people don't realize is that the biggest problem with the towns and stuff is their lawns, especially now that it's all gone dormant. We have one over in Taylor Oaks that had a little bit of wind and went through three people's yards.
Quickly.
Really fast, yeah, so it's not much you can do about that, but, you know, it's, people say, "Oh, there's nothing around that's gonna get here," but oh yeah, you throw a cigarette in your lawn and it's gonna go.
I think I've been asked twice tonight, "Are y'all gonna burn 505 Kings when you're over there training on it?" And I'm like, "No," because we gotta file a bunch of things, and I said, "If you live near there, would you wanna let stuff blowing on your house, and would you want your yard having ash land out?" I was like, "I wouldn't," so no, we're not burning it. We're just gonna cut things and knock things apart, but we're not, we'll turn live hoses on just because that's a practice too, but we're not gonna catch anything on fire over there, so.
No, that's awesome that we have that for you all to do.
Yeah, we'll be there next Monday, just so y'all know. I think I told the two of you by text, but while I'm here, we'll be there again next Monday. We don't block the street, we're able to back every apparatus off the street, so only for about five minutes while we arrive and leave.
Do we have a burn time during certain times of the year, or no burn all the time?
That's Dent County gets that decision, and it could be, literally, they could decide at eight in the morning, when they post by nine, that today is a burn day, and they will change it at noon or one o'clock, all depending on if the wind picks up. So if a front's coming and it was calm in the morning, and the temperature rises and the wind rises, if you were to start burning too, what I advise people to do is call back and see if it's still a burn day right before you start, because they will change it in the middle of the day.
So why don't we just have a burn, no burn totally in Double Oak?
Call your Dent County Fire Lees, and yeah, it's like, that's not us. I mean, if you wanna talk to the town council about trying to like, whatever, but that's, and I don't know if it's necessary either, quite honestly, and I don't think this is... And I don't think this is the time or the place to get into that debate, but I don't know that it's necessary to say that like, we are gonna outlaw burning here if it's necessary.
And we pretty much have always followed Denton County, out of out there in Double Oak. I'll be, I usually check in on Fridays when I'm doing the Friday update just to see if something changed. Same thing with the cross timbers and the water restrictions. There's a lot of things, as much as I'd like to say, you have total control of, we know. Unfortunately, we have a big brother called Denton County, or a big sister, and...
The Fire Marshal.
They get to dictate things to our town.
Yeah. And don't forget to register your fire if you are going to. Just call and leave a message and say, "This is what I'm doing." And here's why it's important. Last week, a call came up in Denton, and it was a cross street, and they didn't know where it was. They started peeing, "We think we need help," and then everyone was trying to find it. And it turned out it was a burn day, and it was in a lot, and they actually had their own water tanker and their own hoses, but they had forgotten to call in and say that that's what they were doing. So what you were hearing on radio traffic was people were coming from different directions trying to find it. And then finally, I think it was Engine 513 found it, and were like, "We found it." It's take this street, it's up in Lantana, by near the golf course, kind of north edge of the golf course. And it was like, "Yep, it's a burn day," and they've done everything right except forgot to leave the message.
You can also now file your burn online, or the online form too, but there's a lot of properties we can't really, I mean, we... I would support a burn ban completely in Double Oak, just a lot of properties that have a lot of brush. When you do have a burn day and a controlled burn, it keeps all that brush from getting out of hand and...
Yep.
Have anywhere to put it.
Back to our earlier point about cleaning out all the detritus from around your home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Welcome, can I grab a beer?
Number 12, Road Committee.
We are working on finding a day in February. We have two days that we're kind of figuring out who on the committee can attend. So, we're kind of working on it. So I will let you know as soon as that happens, but it's kind of a lot of mixing around going on with the committee. So, basically, we'll be training and doing all sorts of stuff with that, so.
Yeah, 'cause this will be coming up on the timing here when we would go out and start to figure out the list that we're gonna use for what we're gonna do with the roads and for the next budget year.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Drainage.
Drainage will have a meeting before the next council meeting.
Okay. Can you let me know when that is?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, some of these cross culverts on some of these streets are literally buried under grass. We don't know that they're there, we don't, you can't really see them. Trying to figure out how we maybe can engage the citizens to at least look in their front yard and see if there's some sort of a culvert that goes across, so we can get them all marked. Because we do not, I did speak with Randall about that. We have a lot of them marked, but we don't have all of them marked. And I think that's a place that we have to get to, so then we can start to work on some of the drainage things that the town can tackle, which is a lot of the cross culverts. I mean, we've got 15 of them located from the drainage study, which there are a couple of them that are major that we're gonna have to start working on immediately, I believe, so...
And is there a map of it?
Yes, of the ones that we had.
The one that we had, it's in that drainage report?
Correct, yeah. Well, I'll get, have to give that to us specifically in a PDF, outside of the PowerPoint, because when you blow it up, it doesn't work very good.
Right, so, yeah, that'd be good to have, just to...
Yeah, I wanna get them all located, so then we can start to group them together and figure out what we need to do.
Right.
Because we will make, we will, we should have a drainage list, and we should have a roads list moving forward, which means we may not be able to do as many roads, but we'll do some more drainage. Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to new business, Item 14, discuss, consider, and act on the purchase of three replacement managed switches from Datamax in the amount of not to exceed $1,129.31. Council, you did have in your packet, agenda packet, any information on this? Was this one of the items that you discussed, Mark?
Yeah, exactly.
So, we'll open it up for discussion here. Any questions from the council?
Mark, are you pleased with this?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you had a ton of questions the last, this was on the last town council.
Yeah, exactly. So we got, I got together with Brian, and he got with Datamax, and they installed some monitoring software, and we were able to look at the traffic and things like that, and peak traffic and sustained and all that other great stuff. And the lower cost ones are be more than enough. If it turns out that the servers are using more traffic than is anticipated, we can bond two of the links together and double the speed. There's, I talked to Datamax, and the current server firewall and everything has enough ports for that, and the newer server firewall will have plenty of ports for doing that also in the future, so...
And another part of this bid, that you said the lower ones?
Yeah, the lower speed, there was the gig, there's the gig in there, the lower ones, 80xB. But the percentages of the peak utilization was so low that they can go 10 times the amount of traffic, but they haven't still be okay.
Yeah.
So, they're all good.
Yeah, you had a lot of questions, you'd give this?
Mark, I don't mind, yeah, Mark. Now I have to thank him for the due diligence.
Yeah, I was curious to make sure you were okay on it too, so...
Yeah, they have lots of requirements for specific security type related requirements that are technology-wise all goofy, but, you know, that's what their requirements are, so... And these can accommodate that too. So, it all looks good.
Any other questions, council? So, the fiscal impact, the funds for this project are currently budgeted in the Town Hall Technology Fund, Equity Fund, number 3450, and approved funds will be transferred to the Technology Expense, number 521034, for this project.
Yeah, I think that the, these switches that we got on here are $7,000 less, so that's a that's a good amount to have in the back pocket if you need it for something else.
Partly behind, I just wanted to publicly thank Mark for his help with this. We had a really good meeting last week or the week before, and we have a number of technology agenda items coming forth. And we'll be, what we'll be doing is, before we bring the council, we'll be having these regular meetings with Mark, who is the Technology Committee, so we can get a lot of these technical questions answered in advance. The next one we have is a server upgrade and some work that needs to be done with that. That'll be happening soon, but just wanted to let everybody know that kind of what the new process will be for these technology purposes. Just wanted to thank you, Mark, for your help with that.
Yes, it's all gathering the data and looking at future plans, that's all it is.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll answer your question on the motion that you need. Do you need a motion that also includes the tech, moving the tech money from the technology fund into this other account?
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I guess I move to purchase three replacement managed switches from Datamax for the amount not to exceed of $11,129.31.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Dietrich and a second by Councilperson Robertson. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Mr. Gordy?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
All right, thank you, council, the item passes. Item 15, discuss, consider, and act on the purchase of five replacement Panasonic toughbook in-car computers and accessories from CDW-G in the amount of not to exceed $28,453.32. This presentation will be by Chief Miller and Brian Schultz, with assistance from Chris, our town administrator. So, the current Panasonic toughbooks are about five to six years old, and at that time, they met the existing requirements for the town's software, and especially for Denton County's computer-aided dispatch system. In 2023, so about three to four years after those toughbooks were purchased, Denton County replaced its CAD system. The older toughbooks don't have enough processing capacity for the county's new CAD system, and that results in very long delays in loading the software and software functionality issues when attempting to multitask. In addition, in 2024, the FBI's CEGIS policy was upgraded to include revised hardware and software requirements resulting in the need for stronger endpoint management. Panasonic's newer toughbooks integrate features that allow for compliance with these requirements. So this purchase will allow continued CEGIS compliance, increased protection of the town's infrastructure, improved productivity, and enhanced officer safety. Quote is for $28,453.32, and that includes five toughbooks with additional RAM, two vehicle docking stations, one antenna, the absolute resilient software, which is related to the FBI's CEGIS policy, and extended warranties and accessories. Thank you, chief. Fiscal impact on this for citizens. The funds for this project are currently included in the Town Hall Technology Fund, number 3450, and we're a budgeted item, and approved funds will be transferred to the Technology Expense Account, number 52, or 521034. Council, I'll open it up for questions.
So this was budgeted for last year? Okay, and that amount as well?
Yeah, it was close, we were close. Other questions? This is one of those active.
Don't want to.
Yeah, you buy the technology and everything, all the requirements change afterwards, and that's why we went with the, you know... And this you have no control over.
Right.
But assuming it's about five to six years of life, pretty much?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty much anything.
Yeah. That's all right, fresh stuff over.
If there are no further questions, is there a motion, council?
I move that we purchase five replacement Panasonic toughbooks, in-car computers, and accessories from CDW-G in the amount not to exceed $28,453.32.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Proton Welling, and a second by Councilperson Feller. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
Mr. Gordy?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
The item passes, thank you, council. Chief, how hard was that? Appreciate y'all on that. Item 16, discuss, consider, and act on an ordinance ordering an election to be held in the town of Double Oak on May 3, 2025, for the mayor and two council seat positions. Presentation by Lynn Joe.
The governing body must order the election according to the election code, so this ordinance fulfills that obligation for y'all to order the election.
Any questions on that? I don't know if it'd be appropriate if we had our election and our voters had to go to Bartonville. But, you know, this really is, it's something that we do pretty much every year, right? About this time.
Correct.
So, other questions? All right, is there a motion?
I move to act on the ordinance ordering an election to be held in the town of Double Oak on May 3, 2025, for the mayor and two council seat positions.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion by Councilperson Robertson and a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
Mr. Gordy?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
All right, the item passes, thank you, council, thank you, Lynn. Item 17, discuss, consider, and act on a town policy for regulation of electric, of election signage, excuse me, tents, parking, and ground installations. We do have a citizen that would like to speak on this, Gene Hillier, if you can please come up.
Gene Hillier, 170, Taylor Oaks, thank you. I am, I think this is a good idea, and I think it's close to the end, and I just have a question. It occurred to me when I saw the agenda that I'd been reading about signs and things when I was running for town council, and there seems to be an inconsistency between this policy, specifically Section 3 signage on town property B, where it says, "Signs must be removed no later than 12 hours after the build of polls on election day." In our town ordinance, Chapter 3, Building Regulations, Article 3, 1300 Sign Regulations, if you go to, in that section, B1 under tempered, Class 1, it includes political signs promoting a particular candidate or party. And if you dig down farther in to Section 1303, Sign Sizes, Time Limitations, there's a maximum sign size of six square feet in an area of, in the area of 60 inches in height, which I think may conflict with this. But certainly, it says in that section, under four, signs displaying time limits are as follows. And under Purpose Political, it says maximum time until day after election day. So I'm wondering if you might wanna change the wording in the policy to match with the ordinance or vice versa, so that at some point in time, there's no confusion if somebody says this and which one takes priority. So it just, it's a detail, but it could be one of the questions, I just thought I'd...
So what, what would you suggest?
I would, so that you don't have to change the ordinance when you're doing this, I would just suggest, say, make it similar to the ordinance, which is until day after election day. And I'll just, I print this off, so you won't get it.
Thank you.
So, that's really all I had as consistency for that, one small line.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. So, council, just reading this, we had set in this policy 12 hours after the close of the polls on election day, and it appears, so polls usually close at 7:00 PM in Texas, correct? And then this states that they have until the day after election day, so that would be 20...
29.
29 hours after. And to stay consistent, should we adjust the policy, council?
Yeah, I'm just confused, so I thought, this is just like a policy, it's not an ordinance?
Right, because we don't wanna confuse...
Okay, I thought maybe it was a change, but Berman wrote this up, right? Or no? Okay, he just wasn't aware, maybe some of those comments.
Well, this is the typical sign stuff that we get, we rent it in packets, you know? Yeah, he was a part of it.
So we just be changing the removal time, so it can say posted no earlier than 12 hours before?
That'd be correct.
And remove no later than 29 hours after, right? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, that's what they're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, because you would have until midnight.
Or just leave it, you know, until the next day.
Or we can just say must be removed no later than the next day.
Yeah, probably just do that.
That'd be easier.
It's the same word, same word.
Early voting, it must be removed no later than the next day.
Yeah, the day.
The day, the day after election day.
And we send, every time we make an adjustment, we send it back to Berman, right?
No. No, we took your recommendations from the last meeting and we just incorporated them in.
Oh, I just wonder if he can just make sure there's not any other little things like that.
He has a meter on his phone.
A charging meter.
It's a charging meter.
We have need to, not for this.
We do this one, we can just, when we make the motion, we can just put it on there with the correction of...
Exactly.
I guess my question's not the only problem.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see how the discussion's good.
Yeah, so the, so the changes from the meeting previous were in signage on town property, it was in C, and each candidate or political committee may replace up to two political signs per public vehicular access point at the town hall polling location and adjacent right to Moriah Park. So, we felt that it was kind of saying that just in front of, we wanted to extend it out to the park. And that was from council. The other change that was made, it was in Section 4, Sign and Stress Limitations. It was Item C, tents, tables, chairs may not be replaced in any paved portion of sidewalks. The change that was made was tents, tables, and chairs can be set up one hour before the polling place is open and must be removed one hour after the polling place is closed at the end of each day during both early voting and on the day of voting. And that was a suggestion from you, the council. And then the other change was in Item D of that same section, and the change was the allocation of space... the allocation of space for tents surrounding the Town Hall parking lot will be allocated by the town administration on a lottery basis. And then the idea there was that you would do that at the time you, uh...
Draw the names.
Draw the names for the ballots. Now keep in mind though, with that, we still have ISD-type people that could be involved and others. So we have to be cognizant of that. I think for our election, I think it's a, it's a great idea that we do this, and then we can have an orderly setup and takedown each and every day of early voting, as well as the day of the polling, the true voting day. But we do have to keep in mind that others still need their space as well. And they wouldn't be there to get the, the, their space, I guess, on the, the day that it's chosen. But in some cases, I mean, some of those people, they just send their people over and they stick signs in. They don't even come over and, and poll and all that stuff. So I don't see that as a big problem. Council, do you? That we just kind of keep it to our own and make sure that we adhere to the sign.
And then once they show up, they can be assigned an area?
Yeah.
Oh, call it, is it to have somebody else, not from the council or just the local town, set up anything?
It runs hot and cold with the ISD.
Ah, okay.
So we've had times where you'll have somebody, because remember, we have Part of Double Oak, it's a Denton ISD. And so we'll have two ISD races going, or multiple people in the race, and you'll have... But a lot of times, they don't really come out and set up tables and things. They just come out and kind of stand with their handbills and talk to people.
Yes.
But I think that obviously, out of courtesy, I would expect that our candidates would at least allow room for them, they're not competing against them. And if we organize this the proper way, it really shouldn't be an issue at all. They would have their room. And once we do the, finally drawing of the new sprinkler system layout, then we will designate the area in the park where all of the bigger signs that you're going to drive into the ground would be there for that. And that's, that's for everything. That's for the 4th of July, that's for the Double Oak Women's Club, so we're not damaging any environmental destruction. So those were the, the adjustments made. And then the adjustment that was brought up by Citizen Hillier this evening. Other questions?
I got one question.
Yes?
Uh, Section 5, first paragraph, last sentence, candidates and electioneers may not actively campaign in the Town Hall parking lot. This poses a danger to people and vehicles.
So, yes, I saw that, and I wanted to see if one of you would pick up on that.
Yeah.
Because, because it's very difficult. We're, we unfortunately, the way we have our setup here with the Town Hall. So I was going to make a suggestion that that probably needs to be stricken from this policy, but this is, this is council work, it's not mayor work.
I think that needs to be stricken.
Yeah, I think as long as we stay behind the line that's already...
Correct.
Marked out for us. I don't think anybody ran out in front of cars last time.
I don't know.
I did not see.
I'd have to get the video.
Running out in front of cars.
So...
I think that part needs to be stricken.
So council, free note of that? Okay. Chris, you can make note of that change, please? Yeah, it'll be, obviously, we've got an election coming up, so I would expect that we cover the policy probably at the time when we do the, the true draw for the ballots. We should have this policy handed out. We can make it be a part of our PAC candidate packet moving forward, and then we can also get it out to the ISDs and such, so. Other questions, comments? Okay, is, let me get back to my sheet. I'll do this right, I'll get it straight. Are there any further discussion, council? Is there a motion?
I move that we set the ordinance on election. I already noted the policy for regulation of election signage, tents, parking, and ground installations with the changes to Section 3, signage on town property B, to match the ordinance that says until the day after Election Day, and also the striking of the section, in Section 5 Parking Restrictions Account Hall that says candidates and electioneers may not actively campaign in Town Hall parking lot from this ordinance.
Policy.
Policy, not ordinance, sorry, I'm mistaken.
Very good. Nice job. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Proton Wellen and a second by Councilperson Robertson. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Gordon?
Aye.
Dr. Pegg?
Aye.
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
All right, thank you, council. So Chris, if you can make the changes on this, that would be great. And then we'll make sure that we pass these out, so that any candidate, future candidates that come understand what is, what will take place with the signs at the Town Hall. Again, just to reiterate, citizens, this is only for the Town Hall. The rest of the town is not impacted by any of this. There's no limitations on how many signs. Obviously, we have the signage, it can only be six feet by, so many inches tall, that we do have to follow that's in there, but this only impacts the town property, the park and the town property. All right, thank you. Moving on to final staff announcements and comments. May 3, 2025, election for mayor and two council seats. The first day of filing an application for a place on the ballot was January 15. The last day to file an application is February 14, 2025, at 5:00 PM. And currently, we have a filing for mayor and two town council. All three are incumbents. And as Lynn had said earlier, we've got until the 14th, so we welcome other citizens if they want to get involved in our town politics. This is a great way to do it. Most of us, if not all of us, started with the school of hard knocks and literally knocking on doors and, and walking around and we're going to get you, so.
I thought you wanted people to do it.
Although that was a positive statement. All right, well, it is now 8:17, and I believe the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate our first responders for being here. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful, warm drive home.